Hey everyone, thought I would make a just kind of a weekend study video. You know, I'm gonna be studying anyways or reflecting, thinking about some recent things. And I figured I would take the opportunity to go over some recent trades. MDLY, my biggest trade of my career. Seventy-two thousand dollar trade. Crazy, you know, just crazy. A record week. Really good things, but then also, you know, some records on the downside. So, kinda talking about how when you're going through a big upswing, it can be great, but then it can also cause you to, you know, once things begin to slow down or you take a red trade with that bigger size, it can definitely affect you more emotionally, which can cause a bigger downswing. And overall, just bad things to happen. So you gotta be really careful when you're sizing up. It can cause a lot of negative effects. But, you know, as long as you're aware of them and reflect on them, you can kind of control them in a timely manner, in an appropriate way and react accordingly. So, this is kind of what this video is. You know, just me trying to fix my mistakes, come back stronger. So, right now, I'm twenty-seven thousand dollars off of my peak highs. So, I'm on a bit of a downswing. And, let's see. For the week, I finished down sixteen thousand dollars. So I lost sixteen thousand dollars this week. That might be my worst week ever, honestly. I think it, I think it is, regardless. Just wanna talk a bit about that. Now that being said, I mean, of course, the, just the week prior, I made a hundred ninety thousand dollars, you know, just a record week. So, you know, when you look at it that way, it's like, well, yeah, sixteen thousand dollars, that sucks, but it's kind of expected. You know, I knew it was going to come. You can't make records without also, you know, feeling the flip side. So the records on the red side as well, it's gonna happen. It's just unavoidable, quite frankly, because to push your limits and to break records, you have to be aggressive and really go for it. And then once those records come in, you pretty much, it is the right thing to do, to keep pushing it and keep trying to test the waters, like test the limits of what, what you can achieve and how aggressive you can be. You know, I, going into this week, I knew it was, uh, things felt so much different and the flows were slower, choppy, trapier. I, just the quality of the plays were poor. There wasn't a lot of liquidity. You know, I could feel it all. It was clear. Everybody kind of felt it. And I kept pushing and kept being aggressive and that's why I'm right on the week, you know? I just couldn't adjust quick enough out of that mindset of kind of the trend holds, holding for those big wins. I just couldn't get out of that mindset. And, uh, yeah, but you know what? That's okay because, look, I, I had to get stuck in that mindset to have the hundred ninety thousand dollar week. So, overall, even though I took a really, a really bad week, you know, everything kind of comes together, everything. What I'm trying to say is, it was necessary. That mindset was just necessary to break records. And now I'll try to adjust and get back to kind of singles add up mentality instead of home runs, as long as this market is going to act in this way. Alright, so I wanna talk about AEMD. It was a huge play just a couple weeks ago. So, it had this perk. You know, you hear me say perks a lot, perks out of range. On the long-term chart, you can see it is capable of some really crazy runs. And this is a very long time ago, you know, two thousand fourteen, but look. Historically, it's capable of doing some crazy things. Little two-day run here goes from, uh, you know, pulls a hundred percent move in two days. It's capable of making crazy moves, right? So, when you get a stock that's just in a range for a while, perks out of it. And then, after hours, it started to run. I actually took an after-hours trade on it. So I was able to scoop some shares. I made like three thousand dollars on it. Didn't think much of it because really, big pre-market gappers weren't that hot at the time. But then I wake up the next morning and I see, oh, it ran to eighteen sixty. Like, wow, so that's gonna be a thing now. Um, so, you know, uh, this is just when you use a play to basically confirm that this trend is going to be a thing now. You can look for them, you can go for them because something showed you, it's on, like game on, you know what I mean? Like, this is gonna, gonna happen. That's what AEMD was for me. It was the insight necessary to basically have that, that confidence to swing MDLY. So, you see something like this and then the very next day, uh, you get MDLY. And I've been watching this for a long time. Just, it's a nice volatile stock that's good to day trade. It has really nice one-day moves. It's, you know, uh, it's good stock. It's fun to play when, when it's hot. And, uh, what I noticed is really it got very sold off. It held some former support levels and then it perked out of the, uh, the range. You know, and you're looking at a multi-month range, perked out of it. I noticed it, you know, I noticed the initial perk and then on the multi-day. I mean, look, um, you get this first move, which by the way is a dollar share. So that's actually, I mean, that's significant. That's a dollar share move. That hits scans obviously and just it's something that should really get your attention. If you miss it during normal hours, I mean, it hits scans on after-hours. Um, it hit new, new high day scans on the following day. Just, again, like, just so many instances of, you know, if you're looking, you, you probably would have found it, you know? And it holds gains on day two and then on day three, it's able to kind of form a slight uptrend and it basically is curling and it's testing this major level that it's, you know, if it breaks out of it, it could have a really huge move and continue out. Then when you get the long-term correlations, um, you know, multi-month breakout on a low float, huge former runner. We just literally the day before, um, you get AEMD, which basically did the same thing, multi-month breakout, like little perk out of the multi-month, uh, trend, okay? Consolidated, once it tested those highs and broke out, it made it, it just an insane gap, okay? And when you see something work the day before and you're able to analyze MDLY and see literally all the same factors, all of a sudden, it doesn't really become that crazy, right? Doesn't, it doesn't become that hard to guess. But you have to be willing to put in the work to find all of those details and to find those correlations and, you know, it, and, and it takes a lot of experience to be able to just on the fly, just know, like instantly, yes, this is good, this fits the hot trend that AEMD just did, I'm gonna go for it, you know? Yeah, it takes a lot of time and effort to get good at that stuff. So, that's where experience comes in. So, experience really helped me to nail the entry and then have the confidence to actually swing it because I felt that was the hot trend, that was proper. That's what AEMD just did. This is probably gonna do it too. Because the market just saw AEMD do it. It's in the market's mind. It's more probable of happening. Um, let's see, there was like one comment that said, you know, there's always gonna be people that say it's like extremely risky and it was just like pure luck. And for that, I just wanna point out, literally only one person said that out of like the thousand people that saw it. So, all I'm trying to explain to, you know, that individual is, the only gap down that MDLY has ever had is right here. It's had one gap down and, you know, over a year. Is it capable of opening a week and selling off? Yeah, but in that case, okay, I would accept it. I would sell it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't get hurt. It would be fine, probably, or a very small loss. The point I'm trying to make is this was extremely safe. So again, you, you gotta know what zones are safe. This was a safe zone because it just showed it's breaking out of a multi-month trend. Has a three-day scale, breaks out of that with basically perfect development. It's very bullish. It's a very proper zone to go long. The probabilities are, it's not gonna gap down. Like, the probability is, you're either gonna get a gap up or it's gonna open around the same area. But the point is, like, I, I did look at the long-term chart. I made sure, is this a stock that gaps down on a regular basis? And it doesn't. It has never had a gap down. It's had one gap down and if you look at the TA, the TA heavily suggests this is not a buy. It's backside. It's really in a descending trend where I would actually anticipate it to get down there. Uh, it's expected. It makes a lot of sense. It's not a place you would ever long. Um, so the, the point is, know what, know what zones are proper. And, uh, your swing trades become a lot safer. You know, all that being said, I rarely swing trade. I mean, this is the, it's probably the first swing trade that I've done in months. And, you know, I, I only swing trade when I'm like, when I am so convinced. And have so much conviction from like other hints, other insight, you know, insights from other plays. When, when things are just so perfect, um, you just have to, like, that, that's kind of my approach on swing trading. I wanna feel like I'm forced to, you know? If I don't, it's just like a huge error because the hot trend is huge gap up. There's the risk reward is so heavily weighted towards I have to swing this, that that's what I did. Alright. And, uh, I haven't taken a swing trade since, or, you know? So, that just goes to show, I'm extremely selective with my swings. This was like an A plus, 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 plus setup. So I sized in in this area. You know, didn't expect much, you know? I was obviously hoping it would start to run after-hours. I didn't know it would. Um, so I was very relieved when I started to do that. And basically, if it got to ten, I would probably lock in profits. It didn't. Came down a bit and then just started holding gains. I was like, well, alright, I'm gonna swing it. And unfortunately, I did not, um, I didn't buy the shares on IB. So I couldn't sell it here because E-Trade's, uh, E-Trade opens at seven AM for pre-market trading. So, seven AM came around, sold off really quick and I just wanted to give it more time. Sold off a lot and I was like, wow, this sucks. Um, I'm down seventy thousand off the peak high. The risk reward suggested I should just wait, try to get that bounce because it's more probable it's gonna bounce than just like break down when it's just sold off. I got the bounce. You know, I waited to see if it could have strength, but it just felt really weak. Kind of, you know, tested that form of resistance. And it just felt so weak. I was like, I gotta get out of here. So, sold it all, made seventy-two thousand dollars, best trade of my career. Very cool. Probably the first time in my career that I finally nailed a swing trade. So this is like nearly five years in the making. I don't want anybody to look at this and just, you know, start going for swings left and right. And, uh, in general, I think that you wanna avoid swing trading, honestly. It's so risky, but when things feel perfect, sometimes I'm willing to go for that home run and I hit it, you know? And, uh, yeah, so that's all I gotta say about it. Um, there was a lot of hints on the multi-day, a lot of hints on the multi-month. There was insight from AEMD, et cetera, et cetera. A stock that has no history of gap downs, essentially, no history. The factors were so good in this trade. So, that's all it comes down to. You know, I was able to have the experience and the insight to take action, to stick to my plan and, uh, it worked out. Worked out in a big way. Alright, now I'm gonna talk about a couple plays from the week, the red week that I just had. Just wanna talk about it, just a couple plays that were like, you know, that I would consider like big, big moments. So you got Pets. This stock, obviously a huge former runner when it made that huge spike to the fourteen fifty area. Washes out. Now what I noticed is it went from washing out in this descending range, okay? It went from a descending range to all of a sudden it's horizontal. So, that's kind of your indication, the bottom, or, you know, it's breaking out of that descending trend. It's forming a horizontal structure so then it can have that base to make a runoff of. Um, so that's what I was looking at. You know, on the multi-day, you have just some different consolidation setups where I'm kind of anticipating that I can get involved and then maybe get a huge breakout like it did in the past. Now, again, you gotta also factor in the market environment. This week did not feel the same as last week. It was very slow, right? So, because the market environment is the way it is, you should take that into account and you should probably not go for a massive home run like this, right? But coming off that big week, I just, I couldn't turn that off. I couldn't turn, you know, the home run mentality off. And when it comes down to it, I just, I knew it wasn't the right place or time and, um, so, yeah, I mean, I noticed it had this after-hours move. It washed out. And so essentially, this is a dip buy because it goes from three ninety to two seventy-five. It's holding a range all morning, right? So you get a range that's holding all morning. Perks out of that range, it starts to test, um, the high of day. So if it has a new high of day breakout, you know, it can make a pretty nice bounce. And these things can really do some crazy stuff. As you can see, it retested the highs from, uh, after-hours. That's pretty crazy. When it broke out of it, you know, I was just thinking, wow, when this thing had a huge breakout before, it went to fifteen. Like, let me just give this some time and see if I can't get like a five-dollar test. Maybe it turns into a halt and maybe, you know, it gaps out of the halt and I get something like six or seven would be insane, right? And that's kind of, that's exactly what I was going for, what I was thinking. Yeah, so, uh, I sized in in this area and I had fifteen thousand shares at two eighty-six average. It was going really good. You know, I was having a lot of patience. It formed a range. It broke out of the range as a sign that it was going to continue. Had a really hard push, broke out, broke out over four and I was just like, wow, this is great. It's probably gonna surge into a volatility halt, like, this is just great. And then it goes from four twenty-five and I'm talking like in a second. It just, boom, gaps to three eighty. And at that moment, I mean, if a play is going to do something crazy, it either explodes into a halt or like, yeah, you might get a sell-off. But you're not gonna get, uh, most times, you're not gonna get like a forty cent reversal within, you know, seconds. Usually that's a bad sign, kind of like, okay, that was it, like that was the top. And I think the hardest part about this week is you're trying to have patience, you're trying to let your plays flow and work out. The problem is, these things would hit the upside within seconds, it seemed. And then reverse within seconds. And maybe it's more like a minute, but the point is, it would happen so fast. And then after the top came in, it would punish you so hard. It would like lose half of the run within a minute. And, and you're just sitting there like, did I really just lose half of this run's profit in a minute, in, in seconds? Like, it's almost like, it's almost like you had absolutely no time to react to anything. It was just like boom, boom, like the play was over, just boom, boom. And, and this happened over and over and over throughout the week. It was just so annoying, you know? Cause usually, um, I don't know, like, usually things don't just die like this. Like, this died. This just died. You know, I was holding it because I'm like, okay, yeah, it sucks, but it's definitely gonna hold this level. And then it'll like come back up, it'll, you know, consolidate a bit and maybe then it'll explode and I'll get that huge multi-dollar move. But, oh, time and time again, this week just showed, that was not going to happen. That wasn't a thing. That's not the trend. So don't go for it. Just lock in your profits every time and, um, I mean, at this peak, I was up twenty thousand dollars at this peak. And I just, I expected the support to hold. I expected to get a bounce and what happened? It didn't bounce. It just never pounced. It just, you know, and then I'm sitting here like, wow, I, I just gave away fifteen thousand dollars of my profits. I should at least wait to get a bounce back to like this three sixty area to sell into. So then I'm holding for that and that bounce never comes in. And then all of a sudden, I'm just, I realize how bad I screwed up. You know, that's when it hit me. Wow. I just made a disastrous mistake. And, uh, I end up selling it at around three oh three. Um, yeah. So, I mean, I made around three thousand dollars on a play that I was up twenty thousand dollars on. That's, that's not, uh, that's not good. That's not good. That is not good. Uh, yeah. Yeah, nope, not a good situation. And then after that, I just left it alone. So that's an example of how, you know, if I just played that one trade differently, I, I would have been green on the week. And that was kind of a common occurrence for me. So, I guess, the point I'm trying to make is, you know, it really wasn't that bad of a week. It really wasn't. Like, literally just like one, one error on one play, on one trade, you know, would have made me have a green week. So, the margin of error to, to basically achieve this red week, it was like very slim and, yeah. I mean, I, I made clear errors, obviously. I had really bad discipline issues after, you know, you make a hundred ninety thousand in a week, all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you don't really care, you know? It's like, oh, I'm up ten thousand, um, I mean, why not go for twenty or thirty? You know what I mean? And, and, you know, it's not, how do I explain that? I mean, I'm trying to push the limits, trying to push my patience, trying to be better. You know, I'm trying to just trade better, but, like, entering a hot market, I honestly think I would have made probably, I mean, I legitimately think I would have made over a hundred thousand dollars this week. If it was a hot week, if it was kind of the week where the, where people that are holding for those bigger trends get rewarded. Oh man, I was in really big positions and really good spots and really good setups and I would have crushed it. I'm talking like a hundred, maybe even two hundred thousand dollars this week. Like, that is the spots that I put myself in. It just wasn't the proper market for it and I knew it wasn't. And that's really why I'm kind of, you know, why I decided to make this video into a deep dive analysis because I really just need to improve on just embracing the actual market environment. Okay, it's a slow market, it's a slow week. You know what? Fine. I'm not gonna have some banger hundred, two hundred K week. That's fine. I can just trade a quick scalp mentality and still probably pull off a thirty, forty thousand dollar week. That's still obviously amazing, right? Life-changing money. And so that's still achievable. But you gotta have precision, you gotta have discipline, you gotta lock in those fast profits. And I just wanted to explain just how fast, um, some of these, you know, you gotta lock it up really fast sometimes. So let me put it this way. Right? Really nice development, A, uh, AUVI. It went from thirteen to nine eighty, right? It's a very big dip. And so I'm looking at that, wow, that's a really big discount. Um, that made a crazy move in the morning. And what do you know? It just held a range all day, right? Or at least three hours or so. It's like, well, if it breaks out of that range, that could be the beginning of a nice bounce. So I buy ten thousand shares, um, I buy ten thousand shares at an average of ten thirteen. Within two minutes, two minutes, it reaches its peak upside. So it hits eleven twenty. I'm up eleven thousand dollars at the high here. So within two minutes, I need to put in a limit order, sell it, all, all within two minutes. And, and it's crazy. It's crazy. You know, cause normally, yeah, you would get a really strong bounce and then like it would hold for like some time and, and maybe chop around a bit. And if it got weak, I could then just like sell it in the ten eighties and it would be like, it would be pretty clear, okay, it's weak, it's failing, I need to get out. But this is different. This is just like a quick surge and then quickly, all the way back down. It's so, it's so hard to have discipline on stuff like this because once it comes down fast, you're like, okay, well, it's gonna hold up, right? Or it's gonna bounce around and then, you know, maybe form a bigger run, maybe curl and then maybe retest this key, uh, resistance from pre-market. Maybe it could even get to twelve. So that's, that was my mindset and these are things that work quite often during the hot market. When you will get that move from ten to twelve. And, you know, I can just, I can bank twenty thousand dollars on this play. But during a slow choppy market, boom, up and down within two minutes, you're up ten K, now you lose it all back. And I actually ended up losing money on this play. So, yeah, I ended up losing five hundred dollars on this, on a play I was up ten thousand dollars. And this just kept happening over and over and over to me. And I, I guess I just couldn't accept the reality. You know, that the market was slowed down and it was, it's just, it's, I mean, after such an explosive great week to come back to kind of a slower, choppier week, you don't wanna accept it, you know? You're like, oh, this can't be real. That fun, the fun was just beginning. Why? Why are we going back to this boring market again? But, you know, you gotta accept the facts. And if you, in trading, if, if you are emotional, not, you know, you have to be logical to make money in trading. Everybody knows it. You know, that's just the facts. You have to be logical. You have to always be open and listening to the facts of what the market is showing you, what the market is telling you. And you have to, you know, play it accordingly until it shows otherwise. That, that's just, that's just how it works. Vino, uh, Vino made a really nice triangle, set up some metric triangle on the, on the long-term chart. It is a former runner, you know, made a nice move from seven to twenty. I'm basically no volume, but shows it's capable of something. It's on a big sell-off. You know, it wasn't a descending trend, but again, you kind of get that situation where it goes from kind of more like a, you know, a descending channel to kind of some horizontal type of structure. And then you can just anticipate, well, if it breaks out of the channel, it's a low float, kind of a former runner, it can make an explosive move, maybe fill some of this gap, you know? So you get the situation where, again, it's quite predictable. So on this day, this is when you get that pre-market perks on scans. So very clear, uh, to watch it. And then comes down, holds a range, starts to perk. And, uh, yeah, so this is where, this is where holding for the trend just gets difficult because if you play this trend, it's like, okay, you can move out of it. It looks great. Goes from five to six. I played this. I was in five thousand shares and I was up five thousand dollars. Well, I saw the long-term chart on Vino. I knew what the situation was. I really liked it a lot for a bigger picture move. I said, I'm gonna have patience on this. I'm, I want to sell it minimum seven. Well, that didn't work out because it came down again. It didn't hold any of those profits. It just came down like it was hollow. Like, there was nothing, no support. It was hollow, like there was nothing, no support, like just. All the way back down. It gets a small bounce. Again, I'm expecting kind of a bigger bounce to kind of the five fifty area to see if it can hold. Um and form anything, but then I get punished um for not, you know. Then it's just like pure punishment a- and zero bounds. So I end up selling it at like. Five fifteen. Basically, I just realized I'm screwed. I sold it to like five fourteen, very small win. On something I was up five thousand dollars on, just another example. You know, and. And I, I, you know, I don't. Call things like this greed. That's not what this is. Um I think. Um my take on the word greed in trading, if you honestly think that. Greed is an emotional word, okay? So if you're ignoring the TA, the technical analysis of the chart, if you're ignoring it. Just because you want to make money and you're not trading to make good trades. Then you could consider that greed because you're getting emotional um instead of looking at the facts. Now, the fact is, the long-term chart was amazing. This short-term kind of development was great and it surged into a halt. I thought it could become a trend play and make and just. You know, make a big run, just like it did. The issue is. It's not even forming structure to kind of form an analysis on. That's why this market is so hard. There's no. Structure. It's just straight up and straight down with no structure to get any type of feel um. Or analysis for what the right decision would be. So you. So that is the point. It's not giving you facts to make decisions off of. It's not forming structures that are giving you insight. It's just. Going up real fast and coming down real fast and the play's over. Did you, did you nail it? Cuz. To nail that, it takes a lot of discipline, a lot of precision, a lot of good timing and a lot of luck as well. You know, curls again, but. The chop, I mean, it was so illiquid and choppy going into this curl. And. When you have a situation where every single play is screwing you over and over and over and over. Because it's a slow market and that means nine out of ten plays are gonna screw you over and fail and not work. Well, then you lose all confidence to play something like this and then it ends up working and you just feel annoyed. Oh, and by the way, it does it again. You're like, oh. Great, it's just like, you know, it held a dip, it's like curling, it. Could break out of this high, make an explosive move cuz it makes a lot of sense on the long-term chart. I'm gonna, I I nailed this entry. Right? It's like, if you nail this, you're like, I nailed it, I'm up a ton of money, I can have patience now and let it actually. Form some structure and form that uptrend that I'm really confident it'll have. Oh, just kidding, just kidding, psych. It's gonna come all the way back down. It's gonna go lower than your initial entry. Psych, um tricked ya, you know what I mean? It's like. This is a massive loss. Um so. And really, again, just no bounce. It li- literally just, you think it go, it couldn't go any lower. You're like, this can't go any lower. It has to bounce here, right? Nope, it can go lower. So. That is just such a tricky week. Brutal. Brutal week. And then you see something that you normally would never see during a hot market. Like, you would never see a play fail this hard. Uh when the market's hot and recover and end up making this run. Like, this just doesn't happen when the market's hot. It's so weird. It's almost like opposite day, right? Just everything's opposite. It's almost like things that I would normally really like and really look for, for like those really nice trend holds for those bigger picture moves. Those things that I would normally look for and and normally they would work great. In this environment, it's like opposite. Those are almost become like avoid spots or like really quick one or two-minute scalp spots. That you wanna get in and get out. And then just avoid, avoid, avoid. And then developments that I would normally just like completely write off, completely ignore, all of a sudden, those are becoming like. Optimal entry spots. So let's just know. I think it's pretty obvious that uh I'm a bit frustrated. If if this continues. Obviously, I'll just adjust and start banking on on these setups. That's the thing about me. No matter what happens, I just adjust. Uh and and the only reason why I'm able to do that is because. I just look at the details and the facts and um. Yeah, i- it's a, it's a great benefit to be able to look at yourself and quickly say. You know, exactly what type of mistakes you made, uh what you need to work on, what you need to adjust. Yeah, uh so just be willing to really. Be authentic and be real with yourself and your performance. And you will quickly adjust and you will quickly make those changes. And it'll work out, you know, it'll work out and uh I guess the point is, you're you're. Using a lot of the same approaches, a lot of the same strategies to time entries and manage risk. But you have to adjust to the, to the, to the flows, to the timeframes and um. To the, to the trends. And this was just a scalp week. It was all about scalps. All about scalps. And yeah, that move was really crazy, went from five to nine. I felt like. Felt really bad missing this, uh. I almost caught it, but I just. Missed it by a bit, made a little, like a mistake, actually punching the order and so I missed my fill and then I was kinda over it and didn't play it. So yeah, uh and then I had two days of pullback. So here we go. You know, got a nice multi-day triangle setup. So again, uh your. TA works in a lot of the same ways, just you have to adjust your view. This is just a multi-day triangle. It showed it can hold that form of support and then it's purging out of the multi-day trend, so you can expect it would bounce a bit. Because it is, you know, did go from nine dollars to the five sixty area, it could bounce a bit. So that's the idea behind that. And it gives some, gives a really nice balance here in the morning. Um and you might think, wow, uh I got a really good entry, you know, I timed some really nice entries. Maybe you had one in the morning and then you're gonna hold it for the bigger picture uptrend or something and then. Just. Comes right back down, right? So it's a scalp market. You gotta lock in those profits, short timeframe views. Um and then my best, well, one of my best trades from Friday was this one right here. Just like a three, you know, it tested it, comes down, tests it, comes down, but it recovers. Tested a third time, sized it nicely in this area. I took honestly irresponsible size, uh fifteen thousand shares. On a play like this, uh on a week like this, I mean, very irresponsible and I I I don't love it. I don't love that I did that. It was just really bad. But it worked out and I guess you can consider that uh lucky. I got a nice uptrend. And I we, I sold it at seven, which I think. I mean, overall. Really good trade and I'm glad I sculpted it. And I'm glad I was not in this patience mentality. Because I would have got punished, you know, if I went for like a bigger. Picture move. Cuz in a hot market, if it breaks out of this. You know, dips but holds, retests the morning high, breaks out of that morning high. What you could expect is a really a bigger picture move to kind of test the form of resistance area. Um so really, in a hot market, I would have went for something like eight, but because the whole week just showed it was awful. I only, you know, I locked it up to seven. So you can see on Friday, I had gotten beaten up enough. Um that it finally started to click. I finally started to lock in quick moves, quick profits and uh. It worked out cuz if I didn't lock in profits. And I said, oh, I have a really good entry. I'm gonna see if this can hold up. I'm gonna swing trade this and go for an MDLY type of insane breakout. I would have gotten completely wrecked, right? I would have, would have taken a massive, massive loss. So you have to listen to what the market is telling you, you know. You have to just go with what's hot, the hot trends. Uh so I did a really good job on Friday. Alright, um let's see, I think the video is long enough. Forty minutes? Yeah, that's, that's long enough. And uh, yeah, just wanted to give an update, basically. You know, I'm in a good place. I'm doing great. You know, obviously, one point three million is damn, it's just a crazy place to be in, so that's really cool and uh. Yeah, I'm on a bit of a dip, but I think I'll bounce back really quickly. Uh I'll. Uh adjust accordingly next week. If it's a hot week, I'll adjust. If it's a slow week, I'll play it accordingly. Uh so. See you in the next video. Thanks.